2020 meeting of the Planning Commission will now come to order. So just a reminder that due to the COVID-19 concerns and the Boulder County offices being closed to May 31st, we're holding the meetings virtually. And additional information on how to participate virtually can be found on the Planning Commission website, webpage, which is voco.org/pc. And there will be opportunity to provide public comment at the different dockets, and I'll give instructions as those come up. So to get us started, I just want to take a quick roll call. So Anne Goldfarb.
Present.
Dan Hilton.
Present.
Mark Bloomfield.
Present.
Melanie Neskey.
Present.
Sam Libby.
Present.
And Sam Fitch.
Present.
And then we know that Gavin and Todd are not able to join us today. And this is Commissioner Leishan Gargano speaking. Since I didn't announce myself at the beginning. So just a reminder, on that note, to identify yourself before speaking and to speak slowly and clearly, we are going to do roll call votes for all of our votes today. We're going to remember to turn on our video whenever possible so that everyone can see us and stay on mute until we're ready to speak. And then Commissioners, just a reminder that when we go to speak, we should open with "This is Commissioner Leishan Gargano", or instead of "This is Leishan Gargano", which I particularly had trouble with last time. So that'll help everybody identify us on the recording. All right. So our first agenda item today is to approve the minutes from last time. Are there any corrections to the minutes before we have a motion? Or do we have a motion?
Yeah, this is Sam Libby. I move that we approve the minutes from the April 15th meeting.
Do we have a second?
Mark Bloomfield, I'll second.
All right, I'm going to do a quick roll call again. So, Mark Bloomfield.
Aye.
Sam Fitch.
Aye.
Leishan Gargano.
Aye.
Anne Goldfarb.
Aye.
Dan Hilton.
Aye.
Sam Libby.
Aye.
Melanie Neskey.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, we have, getting my agenda up in front of us today. I'm sorry, I, too many documents open here. We have five docket items today. So we will be starting with docket SI-18-0003, City of Boulder.
Leishan, we have any staff updates? Sorry, this is.
Oh, sorry, yeah, good point. Staff updates first.
Sorry for nothing, go ahead.
That's okay.
Maybe there aren't any.
All right, if there are no staff updates, then we'll move to docket SI-18-0003, City of Boulder, Boulder Interceptor Sewer Relocation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Sean Gambrell, I'm the planner on this docket. As you mentioned, docket SI-18-0003, City of Boulder Interceptor Sewer Relocation. Let me share my screen here. Are you all seeing my presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So this is an area and activities of state interest review for the relocation and replacement of the City of Boulder Sewer Interceptor line. Project includes replacing an existing 42-inch diameter concrete pipe with a 54- to 66-inch pipe to increase capacity and relocate the line to areas less susceptible to flood damage and erosion. The pipe passes through a number of properties. I won't read all of these out to you, but you can read them here. Generally, in the Valmont area of the county. Passes through several different zones, primarily the agricultural zone, but you can see some other industrial and other residential zones as well. And the applicant is Cole Sigmund from the City of Boulder. So just a vicinity map to show us where we're looking. The interceptor replacement will start here, near the corner of Valmont Road and Butte Mill Road, and will extend up through the Sawhill Ponds and Walden Ponds properties up to the Water Resource Recovery Facility up on North 75th Street. We'll take a closer look at that in a moment. So just a quick overview of the interceptor. The sewer in the area was installed in the 1960s. Included 2.35 miles of 42-inch diameter pipe made out of reinforced concrete. During the 2013 floods, part of this pipe was exposed and had to be rehabilitated. Subsequently, in the 2015 flood events, another portion of sewer line was washed out. So the city has an interest in relocating this line further from Boulder Creek. Currently, the operational status is wet weather, peak flow of 33 million gallons per day, and it's currently operating at 31.2 millions of gallons per day, so very close to capacity. City Master Planning anticipates flow rates to grow to around 55 million gallons per day. And with this replacement, the capacity would increase to 87 million gallons per day and should adequately convey the sewage from city buildout. Also, part of this proposal is to co-align a 6-inch pipe right in the same trench. It won't be put into use immediately, but will be there for future use for renewable biogas that is produced at the Water Resource Recovery Facility. Again, they're just placing that in the trench while they've got the ground open. That won't be put into use anytime in the particularly near future. Total length of improvement is about 2.4 linear miles of new interceptor. So here's the existing service area, the different pipes that run through the city. And you can see the area circled here is basically the project area. There's kind of two different things that will be happening. First, this section of the pipe will be abandoned in place, and the new alignment will be put in if approved. This section of pipe that connects up with the Four Mile Creek, or Four Mount Canyon Creek sewer, will stay in service to convey the flows from this northern area of town and will be rehabilitated in place, lined with slip lining or some other method that doesn't require excavation. And so just a little closer look, this part will be retained, though this part will be abandoned in place here to the southwest. So here's a map showing the existing interceptor and the preferred route. There were many alternatives that were analyzed. This is the preferred route showed in orange here. The purple is the existing interceptor. And again, this red hash here just kind of shows the delineation between the area that will be maintained for the four-mile sewer and the area that will be abandoned in place. You can see we start down here by Valmont and Butte Mill and end here right in the southwest corner of the Water Resource Recovery Facility. As I said, the applicants considered a number of routes. These are the different segments they put together in various different configurations and analyzed what best route may be for this new pipe. And here's just a kind of a look at their scoring methodology. Don't need to go into detail on this, but you can see a pretty robust alternatives analysis. And they did settle with this alignment number 25. This was not the highest scoring, though pretty close to the top score. And the reason some of these higher-scoring alignments were not chosen was because of difficulty obtaining permanent property rights for the land where this pipe would go, for maintenance and other operational purposes. So just to get into our typical suite of maps here a little bit, just to talk about the environment of this. You can see in this dark line here is the new proposed alignment. You can see the area, of course, has many, many natural resources, including critical wildlife habitats, a lot of riparian area, a lot of wetland, and several other resource designations that need to be considered as we go through the criteria analysis. In terms of floodplain, no surprise, pretty much the entire western end of the alignment is within the floodplain and some of the, sorry, the eastern end, and some of the western end as well. The existing interceptor actually mostly lies within the floodway, so this would be an improvement to the alignment in terms of floodplain. Also, there's some prebels habitat in the area, just wanted to point that out. And in terms of geological hazards, you can see this runs through some areas of moderate hazard. Lots of public lands along the route, including some county open space, I'm sorry, city open space over on the west side. This is the Sawhill Ponds area, and then we have the Walden Ponds area as well. You know, both very, both of these in particular, very important recreational public lands. So we referred out to the usual agencies, and just a highlight of some of the responses we received. Our engineering review team noted there would be numerous permits required for work in the road and work elsewhere throughout the project alignment. They'll need a transportation management plan and staging plan. They'd also like interim progress plans and as-built, and a pre-construction meeting ahead of time to discuss traffic management, hours of work, et cetera. Numerous additions are needed to the construction plans versus what we're provided for permitting, which is expected. And just made a specific note that bike and pedestrian traffic at the South Boulder Creek Bridge needs to be maintained throughout construction. Parks and Open Space, who are the owners of the Walden Ponds area, they noted numerous permits and clearances required for work in their area, as well as easements through their property. They had numerous concerns related to disturbance of habitat and disturbance to recreational activities and amenities. They also wanted pre-construction surveys for critical species. They recommended a number of conditions of approval to mitigate impacts to wildlife habitat and recreational facilities. And in particular, there were pretty significant concerns about the separation embankment flood control structure that is in between Bass and Cottonwood Ponds. That is up near the Water Resource Recovery Facility. It was put in after the 2013 floods. And so they want to make sure there's no elevation change in that area that would create obstructions or otherwise compromise the functioning of that structure. Our Natural Resources Planner noted many concerns with the project crossing areas with numerous comprehensive plant designations, important habitat and recreational resources. Specifically, he requested additional surveys for species of concern prior to construction. Floodplain group mentioned a floodplain permit would be required for all activities in the floodplain. Most of this alignment does occur within the floodplain, so that will be required. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service noted a Section 404 permit is required from the Army Corps of Engineers. Boulder Rural Fire requested that road closures be minimized and disruptions to hydrant in the area also be minimized. Excel noted that they have nearby facilities, both gas and electrical, and that any activities within the right-of-way will require approval. In terms of adjacent property owners, we actually only heard from one adjacent property owner. They cited concerns with the pipe's impact to groundwater flows and availability, noting, you know, kind of a lack of water capacity and some of the wells, and wells being very shallow in the vicinity, and concerns that this pipe would basically become an underground dam to aquifer flows. So something to note. And then several agencies offered no response or indicated no conflict. So in terms of the review criteria, there's quite a number. As we go through the 1041 review, I pared this down just to the most relevant ones. There's still quite a few, so bear with me with these. So the first group we'll look at is in Section 8511B. Criteria 1, the applicant has obtained or will obtain all property rights, permits, and approvals necessary for the proposal, and will put that in as a condition of approval for this project. Criteria 2, the applicant has the necessary expertise and financial capability to develop and operate the proposal. They state that this project has been anticipated since 2016 and has been worked into system budgets, and no increase in fees are anticipated as a result of this. They also have hired the expertise of a consultant, Burns &amp; McDonnell, as well as using their own internal expertise. So staff finds there's no concerns with financial capability or expertise. Criteria 5, this is when we get into specific impacts. So air quality is an impact that we reviewed the project against. No long-term impacts to air quality are anticipated from this. There will be localized impacts like dust and exhaust, et cetera, from construction. All of that will be handled through permitting through CDHPE. And we do recommend a dust mitigation plan as a condition of approval for the project. Visual quality is another area where we reviewed for impacts. So the new pipe will be located underground, and significant visual impacts will be temporary. There will be some minor impacts from manholes, markers, things like maintenance, travelways, things like that. But we think those will all be fairly minor in scope. Much of the alignment runs through previously disturbed and developed areas. Particularly at the western side of the alignment runs through things like gravel pits and kind of industrial sites. So really, no concerns there. Sawhill and Walden Ponds, of course, are the areas where we're most concerned about visual impacts. Those natural areas are actually man-made. Previously, were gravel mines. So those are expected to recover from the disturbance. No major topographic changes are anticipated. So we think any long-term visual impacts through those areas will be minor. And across the alignment, ground cover and vegetation will be impacted, of course. So we're going to recommend revegetation in we control plan, and a specification that all trees that are removed are replaced with native species. In terms of surface water quality, that's another impact we look at. Here is the different criteria that we're supposed to review. I'll give you just a second to look over those. So we did note that there would be some localized impacts related to clearing and grading of pond banks, trench dewatering, backfilling the trench. Could include things like sedimentation, turbidity, decreased dissolved oxygen. We think all of those will be essentially temporary and localized. Additionally, sedimentation and turbidity could occur from stormwater runoff from construction. So what we're anticipating is, you know, stormwater quality permit will be required for this work, and we would ask that a stormwater quality plan be developed that address these impacts. Groundwater quality, sorry, groundwater quality is the next area that we review. The applicant has stated they anticipate no impacts to well-functioning capacity or water quality. And the Natural Resources Planner and one adjacent property owner have, however, raised concerns with the pipe obstructing groundwater flows. So that may be something to discuss. Wetlands and riparian areas are another area we consider impacts. Again, most of the construction will be occurring in upland areas. There will be approximately six acres of wetland impacts and about 770 linear feet of stream and ditch impacts, things like crossings that will be impacted. All of those impacts will be temporary and related to construction. No long-term impacts to the structure and function of wetlands or their filtering capacity extents, et cetera, are anticipated. And again, we would ask that a stormwater quality plan be developed to address those impacts, which will be included in the stormwater quality permit. Terrestrial and aquatic animal life is another area we look at. I'll give you just a moment to read the different considerations here. So the applicant did some wildlife surveys in 2017, 2019, and had some scheduled for 2020. And they note that most of the impacts are in upland areas. The potential upland impacts would be habitat loss, some wildlife mortality and displacement. Potential aquatic impacts would be related to sedimentation and spilled materials. The impacts are expected to be minor, localized, and temporary. There shouldn't be any long-term impacts to critical habitat or species composition throughout the project. Further, they're scheduling construction during the winter to reduce impacts to wildlife. And just to reduce these impacts further, staff is recommending a condition of approval that staging and stockpiling locations be approved by the county prior to construction. Terrestrial and aquatic plant life is the next area that we review. Again, surveys were conducted in 2017 and scheduled for 2020. There will be some local disturbance to vegetation. Potential aquatic vegetative impacts will be related to sedimentation and spilled materials. No long-term impacts to the composition or functioning of vegetative communities is anticipated from this. And as before, a revegetation plan and weed management plan that addresses these issues is recommended. Soil and geologic conditions. The applicant has stated that the project won't significantly change topography, drainage patterns, or other characteristics of geology in the area. If the topography near the Bass Pond/Cottonwood Pond flood repair project will be changed, we recommend a condition of approval that the applicant provide topographic plans of those changes and comply with any mitigation measures that Parks and Open Space would require of them. And as before, a stormwater quality permit, which will include a stormwater quality plan, will be required. Criteria 6, proposal will not have a significant adverse effect on the quality or quantity of recreational opportunities and experience. The recreational activities at Walden Ponds and Sawhill Ponds will both be impacted during construction. Those impacts will be temporary and will move as the construction of the pipe progresses. And they're scheduled to occur in winter when recreational use is reduced. So it's, the impacts won't be severe. It won't be that, you know, one whole area will be closed down. There will be other areas of both properties that can be used while construction is going on. We would just ask that the applicant clearly identify those areas that will be closed with signage and make sure that that's very clear to users of the site who may be there at the same time as construction is occurring. Criteria 8, the proposal or its associated transmission system will not create blight or cause other nuisance factors. There will be noise and odors from construction, just necessarily. That will all be regulated through the utility construction permit through the county, so. Criteria 13, for those applications which the director has required information on the environmental impacts and costs of alternatives, the proposal represents the least damaging alternative of reasonable cost. So they, the applicant, did a detailed analysis of 29 unique routes. The selected route is not the least impactful, but balances the environmental impacts with costs and impacts to things like traffic and emergency services. Staff would prefer an alignment utilizing the nearby RTD right-of-way. However, the applicant has stated that RTD has been unwilling to grant permanent rights to this property, so it's really unfeasible for them to be able to locate the pipe there. The preferred alternative primarily traverses previously disrupted areas, and all impacts are expected to be minor, localized, and temporary. And then, under Section 8511K, additional standards for development in flood hazard areas. Development shall preserve the integrity of the flood hazard area by not altering or impacting it in a way that is likely to pose significant threat to public health or safety or to property. So the interceptor will be located entirely below grade, will not alter the floodplain in any significant way. The alignment is located actually further from the floodway than the current alignment, which I think reduces risk both to the infrastructure as well as general flood risk. And again, we would just recommend a condition of approval that it not impact the functioning of the Bass Pond and Cottonwood Pond flood repair structure or alter the topography. And if it does, that the applicant would comply with any mitigation requests from the Parks and Open Space staff. And then a floodplain development is required because much of this development will be happening in the floodplain. So staff's recommendation, based on the analysis summarized here and detailed in the staff report, we recommend that the Planning Commission recommend that the Board of County Commissioners conditionally approve docket SI-18-0003, City of Boulder Interceptor Sewer Relocation, subject to the conditions detailed in the staff report. There are 54 of them. I do have them on subsequent slides if we want to discuss those, but I won't read through those individually. And that's what I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What questions?
Yeah, this is Sam Libby. I had a question on one of the conditions, number 15, which relates to the work hours on the site. So I just wanted to ask, those seem relatively short to me, knowing that the majority of construction is not actually on traveled roadways, but is on private or non-traveled property. Just wondering if that's a standard set of hours, or is there a way to extend that? Just knowing that a lot of the impacts you described are primarily during the construction period. Anything you could do to shorten that would probably reduce that overall period?
Yeah, so actually, I talked to the applicant a little bit about that. Exactly to your point, that the longer the hours can be for construction, the shorter the overall duration of construction. I did speak with our engineering staff. This is primarily related to impacts to the transportation system, but they noted as well, construction that's outside of the right-of-way will still likely have things like trucks entering and leaving, et cetera. So they were pretty firm in this, in this time period. We could modify this condition to say something like, you know, no trucks or, you know, other transportation impacts would be outside of those hours, something like that.
Is there any limitation on the days of the week in here?
They did not indicate that, so. Yeah, none are included at this point, certainly happy to entertain.
Well, then, there's still, this is Commissioner Leishan Gargano, and then there would still be room for the county engineer to approve alterations?
Correct.
So like, if school is still remote when this starts? Just throwing that rate, like, they could go till 4:00 or?
Correct, yeah. I mean, this is, unless explicitly approved by the county engineer. So there is that clause in there that allows that to be modified, you know, a little more informally.
Okay, thank you.
This is Commissioner Hilton. Could you speak a little bit more about the depths of the pipe? So it sounds like the pipe will be at differing depths depending on the topology. Is it ever above ground, or is there, is there a maximum depth that it will go?
The applicant can probably speak more accurately to that, but from the application materials, no section of the pipe is expected to be, you know, above grade or to raise the grade anywhere along the alignment. I think in general, they were in the vicinity of maybe six to seven feet below grade. But again, that does vary, and I would ask that the applicant speak to that.
Thank you.
So my name is Cole Sigman, the applicant.
All right, Cole. When we're done asking questions of staff, we'll...
Sorry, thanks.
What other questions do we have for staff before we hear from the applicant?
Leshin, oh, this is Commissioner Melanie Nasky. It looks like in the chat, engineering staff said they're here to explain more about work hours.
Do we have additional questions for engineering staff?
Yeah, this is Sam Libby, Commissioner Libby. I think just a comment to them to look at potentially extending those in the future. I understand that you already were asked this by staff, so I'm not going to reiterate that, but this seems quite short in the interest of getting things done quickly, so in the future, it'd be good to look at extending those if possible.
Yeah, this is Jennifer Severson. Sorry, this is Jennifer Severson with Engineering Review. We actually worded this condition specifically to allow that it could be, different work hours could be extended or the work hours could be extended by the county engineer if they requested it, so unless explicitly approved by the county engineer. So we realized that we may not be back in school, so there might not be school buses and traffic impacted from that when this finally goes to construction. Also, Sean's right, the focus of this was really the transportation impact, so any area of work that is not going to impact the transportation system, like within open space, if they don't have trucks coming in and out, then we're not so much concerned with that. This really is just the impacts to the transportation system.
Thank you. Other questions for staff?
All right, with that, I would like to invite the applicant to speak.
Thank you. This is Cole Sigman from the City of Boulder. I'm taking over control and will share my screen now. Let's see. Can everyone see the presentation?
No.
There we go.
All right, thank you. And can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. So I'm present and will be presenting. I want to also mention that following the presentation, there'll be another chance for questions. And I have our engineer, Burns McDonald, they have three folks on their team who are participating. And also in attendance is the principal engineer for utilities of the City of Boulder, Douglas Sullivan. So we should be prepared to answer a number of questions, but hopefully, the presentation will answer many of them. I wanted to start by saying that I'm really impressed with the, with the staff report that Sean Gamble put together, and I thought it was a really high level, a high level of quality, and I was very impressed. So I just want to throw that out there. I know that he probably wasn't the only one who worked on that, and so just kudos to the team there at the county. So an overview of the presentation, I'll give background on the project, and then focus on the project drivers, so that everybody can understand really why this is so important. I'd like to touch on a few additional points on the alternatives analysis. Sean did a good job of covering it already. And then, I've got a few detailed slides on what have been considered critical project elements in the staff report. So this project supports the City of Boulder's wastewater collection system. We own and maintain 368 miles of pipeline. That's about 10,000 manholes. It conveys wastewater from homes and businesses to the Water Resource Recovery Facility located at 75th and J, and that facility discharges clean water back into Boulder Creek. The master plan update in 2016 identified four of what we call Tier One, or highest priority capital projects. The main interceptor realignment project is one. There are three others in various stages of planning and design. One, going into construction, is Goose Creek, that will be constructed later this year. Baseline Foothills is slated for next year. And then, the Arapaho trunk line replacement is going to be combined with a transportation project, you know, possibly even 10 years. These target increased wet weather capacity. So project drivers are capacity, condition, and flood vulnerability, and I want to touch on each of these. The collection system as a whole conveys water during dry weather flows sufficiently. There's sufficient capacity for dry weather flows, and it's only during wet weather flows that we really see big issues. The temperature plot that you're looking at on the right here is, it displays the impacts, the projected impacts of a 25-year storm event, and that's our target level of service. Just like a green light, red light, and yellow light in transportation, the red indicates areas where there are issues. And so you can see that the interceptor is shown here, all in red, because it's too full at the 25-year flow. Now, just a point of clarification, this, this system does not intentionally convey stormwater flows. So some systems are what are called combined systems. This is not combined, it's a sanitary sewer system, but through what we call rainfall-derived inflow and infiltration, rainfall events do seep into our collection system, and there is groundwater impact into the collection system as well. And so it's those rain, rain events that really cause issues. What happens when, when the capacity is reached? Well, water goes to the path, to the path of least resistance. Many times, that's manholes. So these are some very visual examples of what manholes can look like. This is the storm, the flood of September 2013, in the area around the southern terminus of this project. We don't have, we won't show pictures of people's basements in the City of Boulder, but there were many, many basements that also experienced the same issue. I'll move on to condition. So this, this pipe has been in service for 50 years. It's a concrete pipe, which was very common in, in the 60s and on into the 80s. Concrete reinforced concrete pipe has rebar in it, and that's what you see here in this photo. The, the pipe is corroding from the inside out, and what you can see is a rebar cage that's exposed. In some places, the, the rebar cage that's exposed is actually the second layer of rebar. And so even if we weren't upsizing this infrastructure, we would need to replace it or dramatically rehabilitate this asset. It's at the end of its useful life, and for this reason, the project is a very high priority for the city. And for this reason, I'm especially thankful for everyone for allowing this process to move forward even in, in with these remote requirements. The third, the third project driver is the risk of washout. And washout is a term that's used to describe when flooded waters basically break a pipe or dismember a pipe. In these cases, luckily, that didn't happen, but it came very close to happening. So on the left, this manhole was washed over in the September 2013 flood. It was subsequently reinforced. The creek was diverted back to its banks, and that pipe exists today as our existing 42-inch interceptor. On the right, that was another rainy event in May of 2015. Again, Boulder Creek left its banks and washed over and dangerously, dangerously close to an area of our existing interceptor. In this case, it was over-ascended, and on the right, you can see where they are reinforcing the, the pipe with concrete. So the project that we end up with here is our main interceptor realignment. The figure on the right shows a purple line and a gold line. Those are the same as in Sean's photos. The purple line is our existing interceptor, and the gold line is the, the new proposed alignment. You can see that the purple line is very close to Boulder Creek, in South Boulder Creek, basically all the way from Butte Mill to the plant. This, it'll be, I won't read all these bullets, but yeah, each of these is about two and a half miles long. This results in a total project cost of $48 million. This is not the most economically, it's not, not the lowest cost option, and so just wanted to point out that our alternatives analysis was qualitative, and costs were brought in at a later date, once an alignment was chosen. Right now, the construction is slated from 2022 to 2024. The original alternatives analysis included sort of four alignment, alternative alignments to the existing interceptor. So just to give a little bit of history, this 1041 was submitted previously but did not make it to the hearing previously, so this is the first time we've been in a planning commission hearing. The northern alignment, as we called it, this shows this blue line, and in general, this was a favored alternative. Part of the reason why it was a favored alternative is because it conveyed a four, the four-mile trunk sewer that comes in from the north. Because there were some issues with that alignment, both with the creek crossing, with Poor Farm-Fort Chambers property, which is approximately right here, having significant cultural, historical value, in addition to ecological value, and a private property here, we were not able to make that work. So what we proposed, proposed back then was a hybrid, which is this pink line, following the RTD, and there's an orange line that shows an RTD alignment, and then moving north through CPW property and then through open space. We also contemplated an alignment in Valmont Road, which would be associated with a significantly extended closure of Valmont Road, which, which was heavily weighted in our alternatives This next slide shows the four-mile trunk sewer coming in from the north, which was not shown in that previous figure. There's also this lateral that comes in from an area east of Boulder Airport. So this comprehensive alternatives analysis looked at basically every, every possible scenario we could think of, how to convey water from, from Butte Mill Road and Valmont Road to the Water Resource Recovery Facility. You can see that a lift station is contemplated for conveying water from the four-mile trunk sewer down to the, the main alignment, this lift station here. We also considered a pipe that may do the same thing. The lift station has a very high, not only cost but also risk, and is an additional piece of infrastructure that uses energy required for maintenance, and it, we have one lift station in our entire system, and it's, it's nice that we found an alternative to that. The alternative to that is this, what we call Node R in this alternatives analysis, but retaining the existing alignment with rehabilitation and reinforcement against floodwaters, and that'll convey this four-mile trunk sewer flow, which is about 25% of the flow, the total flow. So the proposed alternative is shown here, and so just a more detailed look of these two options. I wanted to make a note about capacity. So in Sean's presentation, he mentioned a number 87 million gallons a day. So our master plan design included 72.5 million gallons a day as the max flow into, max hourly flow into the Water Resource Recovery Facility. That includes about 25%, or 25% of that comes from the north, from Gun Barrel, to, to trunk sewers or interceptors that come in from north there, and it also includes the four-mile trunk sewer flow. So I just wanted to point that out because the design of this pipeline is conservative. It was designed for that 72.5 MGD. Sean also mentioned a figure 55.3 million gallons a day, and that's, that's closer to, to what the design, you know, will be, but, you know, we've, we've been having some internal discussions about that number being conservative as well, and we can get into that if, in greater detail if you'd like later. So I'd like to get into these critical project elements. There are three crossings I'd like to discuss, and then I'd like to discuss a little bit about what to expect with the interceptor rehabilitation, and then I want to talk for a minute about the resources and how we, this project would protect resources in these valuable areas. So the first crossing is, crossing is South Boulder Creek. The picture on the right shows Valmont, so if you were, if you were headed from the bottom of the screen to the top of the screen, you'd be headed into Boulder. You would have just passed Western Disposal on your left, and you'd be coming up to the intersection of 55th, where there's a post office on your right. And, and so north is this way. So our, our existing sewer is shown here in purple, as it was in the previous figure. It's a 36-inch that goes under the creek. This needs to be upsized to a 42-inch, so this creek crossing is included. Likely, it'll be an open cut. Trenchless would be very difficult, if not impossible, in this area, and it'll require close coordination with not only the county but also US Army Corps of Engineers, since this would be jurisdictional water. The next area I'd like to discuss with the crossing, and it actually, it could be considered two or five crossings, is the, is the crossing of Valmont Road and 61st Street. So here's our existing sanitary sewer interceptor. On the right, there are two 36-inch trunk lines that come in that join there and, and then proceed north. This, by the way, is just, just east of where we just were, so right where that box is, where it says 60, 36 sanitary, 36-inch sanitary sewer, that's the Western Disposal property. You can see Butte Mill in the top right, and then the historic town of Valmont in the top left there. Our, our new interceptor is proposed to grab these two trunk lines to cross Valmont. We think as a draft concept, this, this could be possible as a trenchless crossing. And then, the preliminary design shows the alignment proceeding along the north side of the right-of-way of Valmont, jogging 61st Street, and then crossing 61st Street and proceeding along the south side of the RTD interceptor at the back end of the properties along Valmont Road. A few things to discuss here. Traffic coordination will be, you know, the most challenging in this project in this, these locations. One, one relevant point is that there's a four-lane, and a four-lane with a median most of the way, and then at this intersection, the four-lane goes to two-lane. And so we, we will have the benefit of working in a wide right-of-way, and a closure is not anticipated to be needed, and the conditions of approval ensure that that won't be a possibility. We, we've heard a concern from neighbors in this area about the hydrology. We can get into that, we can get into that discussion as needed, but again, just to restate, our, our hydrogeologists on this project do not anticipate any impacts to groundwater in this area, to the shallow wells that do exist in this, in this neighborhood here. Other critical crossings are ditches, so the Jones-Donnely ditch crosses here. There's a lateral that Jones-Donnely ditch that crosses in this area. We'll be crossing all three of those. We'll maintain access to these driveways along here, and we will maintain the existing water table. The third critical crossing I wanted to discuss is the flood spillway. So just, we've jumped to the end of the project here, northeast of where the, the red circle is designating the spillway, is our Water Resource Recovery Facility, so those are two buildings that you can see as you walk on the Walden Ponds Trail. The, the trail to the north wraps around the facility, and there's a parking lot at 75th and J, and then there's another access to this open space on a road, a county parking lot to the south here. Through this area, now, in Valmont, the, the depth... Through this area, now in Valmont, the the depth of the pipeline is twenty five feet, and that's the maximum depth to the bottom of the pipe. The the top of the pipe here is right at grade. And if you're, I know there are some very savvy board members. If you have looked at the preliminary design, it shows actually the pipe above grade in this in this area. There are a few reasons for that. The the biggest reason for that is that the LiDAR data that was used for this shows the condition of this this area in its post-flood state. In other words, prior to the construction of the spillway. So we're committed to not having the pipe above the ground in this area, and that is a condition of approval. So just to orient you a little bit more, here is the existing forty two inch sanitary sewer coming into the the facility, and then the proposed sixty six inch sanitary sewer coming from the south over this spillway. And, you know, you can see the spillway, it kind of looks like a sidewalk here. You know, the critical aspect of this will be not only maintaining the existing grade so that, you know, we can maintain the existing flood passing capability of this structure, but to also maintain the hydraulic connection between ponds. I spoke to the the irrigation or the ditch specialist at Boulder County, and she is aware of a ditch through here that actually, the the conveyance is is blocked on the east side. So, you know, we'll be working closely with the county staff to make sure that this is reinstated and that there's another ditch crossing to the south. So that's that's the spillways. So moving to the existing interceptor and the excellent staff report, one one issue that I wanted to just point out was that it stated that there won't be any surface impacts to slip lining. And I just wanted to show a couple pictures of slip lining to be clear about the excavation that we're talking about. And so on the on the left, there's an H D P E line being installed. I think this is in Westminster. This is being installed as sort of in a slipline fashion, and you can just sort of see the the size of that hole there. This will look a lot like if we lined this existing interceptor with an eighteen inch H D P E line, which is one option. On the right, this is thirty six inch, what we call GRP pipe. A lot of people just call it Hobos pipe by its brand name. And this is being inserted into a forty two inch pipe. And so that would be a lot, look a lot like what we have at our project. This is a project in Albuquerque and was shared with us by A U I Constructors. These are twenty foot sticks. So this is a stick, and the the excavation houses this this box, and the the stick of pipe is placed into the box and then pushed into place and stabbed into the the next pipe over by some heavy equipment. And so in that way, you can replace or rehabilitate a very long section of pipe with just a small excavation. I'd like to address wetland wildlife resources. This is a very rich area. I would like to read through these. We anticipate six point oh two acres of wetland impacts. This is Critical Wildlife Area Twenty Five in the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan and High Biodiversity Area Twenty Seven. The ladies' tresses orchid may exist in this area, so will be surveyed for that. Has not been found. As Sean mentioned, Preble's Meadow Jumping Mouse Habitat is in this area. There's a Rhyherean Habitat Connector, Boulder Creek Flood Plane and Associated Uplands. There's Bald Eagle, not on the project site or within distance of the project site, but it is winter range for a bald eagle. There, a bald eagle exists from view from the plant, but it's it's east of the plant. Mule deer are also in here in the summer and winter. This is a picture within the open space. So there are multiple ways that the project will address these impacts and protect the critical wildlife habitat. One of them is that we're going to be required to construct in the winter. And so Wintertown construction, mid-October to mid-mid-March, is not going to be fun. But it's, there are a few reasons that that were pushed into there. Raptors, so there's an Osprey nest in the CPW property. That's actually, that's a state-owned property that the city of Boulder has management lease on. And there are ditch crossings, and in general, the wildlife is is just less active in the winter. I want to also highlight permitting and coordination with federal agencies. So the U S Army Corps of Engineers refers us to the U S Fish and Wildlife Service. They administer the Endangered Species Act, so we'll be very, very careful and follow all the rules there. We'll construct within marked easements. We'll have a robust stormwater protection plan. We'll follow recommendations from from all landowners, including City of Boulder Open Space and CPW and Boulder County Open Space on reseeding and reclamation of disturbed areas, noxious weed and aquatic nuisance species control measures, fencing and covering of open space areas to protect wildlife. And then there'll be an environmental resource specialist on site to survey for wildlife and monitor construction activities. Just two more slides here, and I just wanted to show and illustrate a couple projects where restoration has been successful. This is a Carter Lake Pipeline project. It's significant to show this picture now because this project was just completed earlier this spring and is delivering water to the City of Boulder Sixty Third Water Treatment Facility. You can see the open cut construction on the left here, and about a year later on the right, the only evidence of that was these marker posts. This is a complicated, complex permitting project that that, you know, illustrates the the possibility of getting a monumental project through with some important planning. The other example is an example I have from Burn, Burns and McDonald from a water pipeline project in Gillette, Wyoming. Again, on the left, open cut construction, and on the right, approximately one year later, after revegetation restoration. With that, as I said, I'm happy to answer questions. I also have some some staff that have other areas of expertise than my own. Just briefly, I'll show, this is the area of, this is a photo of the CPW property and an old gravel road where the project is proposed. This photo shows the corner of the Water Resource Recovery Facility, Walden Pond, Salt Hill Ponds, Valmont Butte. This is the Keter property. And then a photo of the facility where this water will end up.
Thank you. What questions do we have?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Libby. I had a question about the abandoned section between those two pieces. Just a question, is it a concern, given, given the quality of the interior of that pipe that you showed, any risk of subsidence or collapse in that abandoned section? I wasn't clear what that was under or near, but you can speak more to that.
Yeah, that's a great question. And let me get back up to a map where I can sort of show that. And so the the question, the area that Commissioner Libby is speaking of is between Sixty First Street here and and Valmont Road, and in the application, it showed as abandoned in place. That's our plan to abandon in place currently. We have sort of two options that we'll consider in final design for this pipeline. One of them is to rehabilitate this downstream section to convey just the four mile trunk sewer flows. So that would be around an eighteen inch pipe, sliplined into the forty two inch pipe. We'd grow out around that to provide some extra structural stability for that pipe. And and another option is to slipline it with a thirty six inch pipe, much like the photo that I showed from Albuquerque. Now, if we slipline with thirty six inch, that would give us the opportunity to have a junction structure in here to divert flow to this old interceptor so that we can maintain the the new section of interceptor. That wouldn't work during wet flows, and we want to be careful not to operate both at the same time during wet flows, which would overwhelm the plant for sure. There's some, there's some cost implications of this. There are some technical implications of this. We haven't made a decision yet. If we do end up going with an eighteen inch here and couldn't possibly reuse this section of pipe, then we would abandon and remove sections that are adjacent to the creek as conditioned in the conditions of approval. We all may also elect to rehabilitate this section. I mentioned that a significant section from about about here all the way to Sixty First Street is already rehabilitated, so it's already that new GRP pipe. And that was based on a breach that occurred in twenty fifteen, where the pipe was washed over and exposed close to Sixty First Street. So some of it's already done. We may end up doing the rest of it. We may not. I hope that answers your question.
Does, thank you.
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. When you say abandoned in place, is that, I mean, do you just, do you do anything to like fill it in or anything like that, or is it just literally you just maybe cap off the ends?
I think there is a condition of approval that addresses what we need to do in in the vicinity of Boulder Creek, which is remove the pipe. But the sections that are deemed appropriate to abandon in place, we would fill the ends with, for example, C L S M or or concrete slurry. There's an example of that that's going to occur later this year on our Goose Creek Interceptor project, where we're abandoning our existing interceptor in place. And there's, there's not much reason to to remove that pipe. It's on our own land, and it would just create more impact and more cost to to remove it.
Is there any?
I'll mention the manholes, the manholes are removed at grade, the cones removed, the manholes are filled. And so there's no evidence of the abandoned pipe at grade.
Is there any concern of collapse, you know, in the year?
If there is, then it would be reinforced or removed.
I have a question. This is Daniel Hilton. I have a question on the biogas pipeline. Does that sit above the wastewater pipeline? And I assume that it would never be exposed in any case above ground.
Yeah, good question. So the biogas pipeline was included in the ten forty one application. I can draw your attention to Appendix B, the preliminary design. And at the very end of that drawing set, there's a detail that shows the biogas pipe. It's sort of more off to the side, but again, again, with preliminary preliminary design, we don't know exactly the best place for that pipe. What we don't want to do is put it right in the way of maintenance. And so it would, it would be some distance to the side of the pipe, not directly on top, and certainly would not exist above grade.
Thanks.
This is Commissioner Neskey. I was wondering if you could speak a little bit more about the the hydrology near Valmont Road, the concerns from from the public. I know you said that there there is not anticipated to be any impacts.
That's right. And so why don't I, why don't I get started, and then I can turn it over to our expert, Kate Henske. So that's a heads up for Kate. So in this, this area is the historic town of of Valmont. In that area, they're served by wells, and so many of those wells are shallow. You know, we're talking ten foot, ten foot wells that, and while the city has infrastructure that runs through there, there are planning documents like the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan and the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan that that designate this area as Area Three, if you're familiar with that designation. We, you know, we can't offer services in in this area. And so their principal water source is is these wells, and so they are concerned. So the the pipe, you know, generally, generally, it'll run under Boulder Creek and then along Valmont. Maybe I should flip down to something that's not an outdated photo or a figure. And with the pipe, the new pipe going in down here, this is Valmont Butte, and so there's, you know, a big shelf associated with Valmont Butte. The pipe will be in the road, sort of by this geologic shelf. And you might imagine that the the water that fills the water table would be populated by South Boulder Creek and Boulder Creek, which which converge at this point right here, south of Pitt D, as it's called, and then continue. So the groundwater table in here is is won't be impacted by the pipe that's down in Valmont. With with that very high level explanation, I'll turn it over to Kate Henske. Are you there, Kate?
Yes. Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you. I thought that Cole did a great job just explaining it. I just wanted to make a point that I'm not an expert in groundwater, but I did speak with people within our firm who have a much better handle on this than I do. And the groundwater will still be able to flow. We'll have bedding around the pipe so that water can get through, and it won't cause an issue to the existing wells, even though they are shallow. So the groundwater will still get through.
And and I might add to that, you know, a concern that was not expressed officially, but was expressed to us through other avenues from the ditch company and and users of the ditch water in this area was that the the pipeline would convey ditch water underground. And there is an engineering block to that happening, and it's called cutoff walls. So cutoff walls are planned. You know, you might imagine these being installed perpendicular to the pipe. So they allow water to flow past the pipe, but not, they don't, they prevent this sort of new gravel pipeline as being a conveyance for groundwater that would deplete ditch resources and other groundwater, have other groundwater impacts. Thanks, Kate.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. I have a question about the bicycle and pedestrian traffic at the South Boulder Creek Bridge Bike Way Underpass. What what will you be doing to that during construction to provide access?
So we haven't worked out, that's a good question. Thank you for that question. We haven't worked out exact transportation measures and transportation control, but we'll be working with Boulder County Transportation on that. We we frequently redirect, temporarily redirect bicycle traffic as part of our transportation mitigation with large projects like these. And we would include those those details in our in our transportation permit. So we are aware of the 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 need for bicycle traffic in that area, and we'll we'll provide an alternate option when the the existing one under the creek there is is not available to to make sure that bikers can safely cross. I want to, you know, while you mentioned bicycles, there have been a number of questions in general on other bicycle infrastructure. So there is a City of Boulder and County, Boulder County Collaborative. I want to say Condition Four covers the the bicycle traffic diversion. I was going to add that there's a trail planned from that area, sort of that, that's been called the Trail to Nowhere, right, right at that South Boulder Creek crossing here. The trail ends. There's a continuation of that as planned Sixty First Street, and it's going to be along the RTD right of way. They were able to obtain a temporary use, a permit from RTD, and that was available to us too, the temporary use permit for a pipeline. But pipeline infrastructure is, it's not something that we can agree to have temporary access for. There's also some talk about rail-to-trail project from this area at Sixty First Street all the way to Seventy Fifth Street. I wanted to point out that whatever we install in here, it will be compatible with with a future trail if the various transportation departments collaborate on such a project.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any more questions?
All right, do we have any more questions? Okay, with that, I'm going to give some instructions on how to do public comments. Sorry, there's background noise over here. And then we will open for that. So any member of the public will have a chance to speak, even if you didn't sign up from the homepage beforehand. We are going to let anybody who signed up in advance speak first. And then we can take anybody who signs up here in person. So if you join by computer, you can sign up by submitting your first name, last name, address, and the docket number in the chat box. Or if you're on your phone, you could unmute yourself with star six and just state your name and desire to speak so that we can get you on the list. And then we'll go in the order that we receive those. So when it's your turn to speak, you'll unmute yourself by either clicking the microphone button if you're on your computer or star six if you're on your phone. And staff will have a timing system set up. And you'll get a warning when you have 30 seconds remaining. Please don't submit any comments or questions in the chat box. The chat box is really just for signing up. It's not for any other purpose. And just a reminder to direct all questions and comments to the board, not to anybody else on the call as, you know, when we're in person, you and face us and speak to us, do the same. My kid's having fun in the background. And then I can direct any questions that arise during the hearing appropriately. All right.
Leishan, this is Richard Hackett, staff. I just wanted to let you know, we're not, we don't have a 30 second warning for the end of the three minute comment period. But at the end of three minutes, there will be an audible alarm that I'll use and it'll sound like this. Just wanted to make sure you can hear that okay?
I can, thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, so with that, I am not seeing anybody signed up in advance. Is there anyone who would like to speak now on this docket? I don't see any in the chat or hear any. Okay, with that, I will close public comment on this docket and open for conversation among Commissioners.
Yes, Commissioner will be, just to, I guess, present my thoughts on that. So I would say, obviously, a very complicated presentation and plan here. I think well presented and clearly looked, looked at a lot of different alternatives. I think the scoring seems reasonable for that. And I've thought about a lot of the different externalities here. So there's a lot of conditions there that I think protects the various values that we're looking for in the review. And I'm supportive of the application as it stands.
This is Commissioner Ann Goldfarb. I would agree with Sam. I think that all these conditions and the ongoing oversight and process that will happen during this construction project between the city and the county, I think will, will serve to protect the county's interests here. And I feel comfortable with this proposal.
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. I concur with all of you.
This is Commissioner Neskey. Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. I really appreciate the weighted concern on the environmental impacts, the traffic impacts. I can imagine how many moving parts are in this project. So, you know, thank you for the thorough investigation and all of the different routes. And I think staff did a really good job in putting together all the conditions that, that address our concerns.
This is Commissioner Gargano. I definitely echo those sentiments. And, you know, it was any concern I had while I was reading through the packet. And then I'd go through and see the conditions and just how wonderfully they covered everything. So there are a lot of them, but I think that they are appropriate. Any other thoughts or emotions?
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. I'm happy to make a motion. If we're ready. I move that the Planning Board recommend to the Board of County Commissioners conditional approval of docket SI dash 18 dash 0003, City of Boulder Interceptor. So relocation subject to the four conditions as outlined in our packet.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb, I'd second.
With that, I'll take a roll call. Sam Fitch.
I agree.
Sam Living.
Hi.
Melanie Neskey.
Hi.
Mark Bloomfield.
Hi.
Dan Hilton.
Hi.
Ann Goldfarb.
Hi.
And then Leishan Gargano, aye. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, with that, we will move to docket V dash 20 dash 0002, Ryan Vacation.
All right. Sounds like such a pleasant docket, the title.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Rainy Ott with Community Planning and Permitting. Can everyone see my presentation?
Yes.
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 So I'm presenting docket V 20 0002, the Ryan Vacation at 1375 Eastview Drive. So we're located just outside of the city of Boulder, south of Arapahoe in the Crestmore subdivision. The applicant and owner is Daniel Ryan, zoned estate residential. A little bit of history, Crestmore subdivision plat was approved in 1955. And in 2019, just last year, a new driveway and residence were approved for this lot by the Board of County Commissioners. The current request is to vacate a portion of the Eastview Drive platted right of way, increasing the lot size from 0.88 acres to approximately 0.92 acres. There is also an additional request, an exemption plat, to replat the subdivision if the vacation is approved. But that part of the request is not under the purview of the Planning Commission. Here's an aerial map of the subject property showing the Eastview Drive on the right side. As you can see, it's not developed. And on the left here is the Crestmore plat and the aerial on the right with the subject property outlined in blue and the area requested for vacation in red. On the left is a picture of looking west on Crestmore. And then on the right is, basically, I just turned around and looked at the intersection of Crestmore and Eastview, which come to a T. And then here on the left, we are looking north on the Eastview right of way. And then just approaching that slope, looking down, you can see the whole area of the platted cul-de-sac, part of which is being requested for that vacation. And then looking back up towards that intersection of Crestmore and Eastview. And then just a closer look at the area of the vacation request. So this was referred out to the typical agencies and departments of note. The Engineering Development Review Team stated that the Public Works Department has no plans to develop the Eastview right of way. And the request does not preclude any parcels from legal access. Therefore, the county engineer supports the vacation request as proposed. We sent notifications to 83 adjacent property owners and received no comments. For the vacation criteria of note, criterion B, unless otherwise noted, the portions of the road or alley vacated will be divided down the center. Since this portion of the vacation is noted on the site plan as just that area of the cul-de-sac, only that area will be vacated instead of dividing it down the middle. All the other vacation criteria were met for this docket. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend conditional approval for docket V 20 0002, Ryan Vacation, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. The applicant, Mr. Ryan, unfortunately could not be here today. He was in a bicycle accident and he is in the hospital. So if you have any questions, I will try to answer them as best I can.
Thank you. Sorry to hear that. What questions do we have? Hearing any questions, I'll just open for discussion among, oh, no, we have public comment first. So no presentation from the applicant. I will quickly repeat public comments. So just a reminder, there's nobody signed up previously. If you'd like to sign up now to speak on this docket, please post your name and address in the chat. Or if you are on the phone, you can press star six and let us know your name and that you'd like to speak. We'll do the three minute timer with a buzzer at the end. And just a reminder not to ask questions in the chat box and to address the board members directly. So I'll wait a couple of seconds to see if anybody wants to sign up. All right, seeing none, I will close public comments and then open it back up for Commissioner discussion.
Commissioner Fitch, I would move that the Planning Commission recommend that the Board of County Commissioners conditionally approve docket V 20 0002, Ryan Vacation, with the stated three conditions.
Do we have any additional discussion or a second?
This is Commissioner Bloomfield, I'll second.
Okay, I will take a roll call. Ann Goldfarb.
Hi.
Dan Hilton.
Hi.
Mark Bloomfield.
Hi.
Melanie Neskey.
Hi.
Sam Living.
Hi.
Sam Fitch.
Hi.
Leishan Gargano, aye. The motion passes, thank you.
All right, with that, I will open docket V dash 20 dash 0003, the Walter Vacation.
Rainy Ott again. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So I'm presenting the docket V 20 0003, the Walter Vacation at 350 Gold Run, 351 and 391 Grove Street. And then another parcel that's identified as Zero Hill, Hill Street. So that we are located in the Gold Hill Townsite up in the mountains. The applicants and owners are Robert Walter and his sister Lynn Walter. The zoning is historic. And just a little history, Gold Hill Townsite was platted in 1888. The request is to vacate the Hill Street right of way east of Lot 5, Block 9, and west of Grove Street in the Gold Hill Townsite. And for this one as well, there is an additional request for a subdivision exemption to merge lots 1 through 4 of Block 9, which is not under the purview of the Planning Commission. Here is an aerial map of the properties, just showing, showing the current conditions. And you can see the Hill Street right of way going in between them. Public lands map, there is some open space south of the subject properties. And then the plat is of Gold Hill is on the left, showing that Block 9, Lot 5, and the, the Hill Street right of way going through there. And then on the right is the aerial and what that looks like. Some site photos. This photo is looking, standing on Grove Street, looking west towards the Hill Street right of way. You can see there's a pretty big hill. That fire hydrant is about in the middle of the right of way. And then this is looking back down that hill towards the fire hydrant again. And here we are looking north on the Hill Street right of way with that little barn over to the left and the residence to the right. And then looking west again as the right of way turns. So this was referred out to the typical agencies and departments as well. Of note, the Parks and Open Space Department initially could not support the request due to several concerns, mostly having to do with pedestrian access to the open space parcel to the south of the subject properties. Excel Energy also requested an easement. They have some existing overhead lines within the right of way and they requested an easement for those. The County Engineering Development Review Team stated that Public Works has no plans to develop the Hill Street right of way and that the request doesn't preclude any, any parcels from having legal access. So the county engineer supports the request as proposed. And then we sent 112 notifications to adjacent property owners and received two responses, one with no conflict and one in support. The vacation criteria, criterion B, again, unless otherwise noted, the portions of the road or alley will be divided down the center. Here, staff is recommending the establishment of a 10 foot wide utility and pedestrian easement along the former center, center line of the Hill Street right of way to address concerns from Excel and Parks and Open Space. All the other vacation criteria were met. And therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend conditional approval for docket V 20 0003, Walter Vacation, subject to the conditions in the staff recommendation.
Thank you. What questions do we have?
I can ask a quick question. It looked like the home is in the easement. And so just thinking about that 10 foot right of way and what that looks like, I'm assuming it doesn't conflict with any of the, you know, existing.
The parcel boundaries and on the aerial are not exactly lined up. The, the house, I believe, is completely on these lots 1 through 4 of Block 9.
Okay. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Libbey, I have a question about the pedestrian access. So in the photo you provided, I think, looking west from Grove Street, it looked as though the, yeah, exactly. It's basically up, up a hill that looks pretty steep to me. And I'm not sure how pedestrians would access that property in that area. Is it accurate that the Gold, Gold Hill Meadows property is actually just abutting the road here to the south? Because I'm questioning the need for that access. It looks like people walk to the south anyways to get there from this photo. And also it's accessible from the road entirely along its length.
Yes, so the open space is accessible from Grove Street directly. The concern that Parks and Open Space had was actually access from the other side. So from Gold Run here, if you can see my cursor, I'm not sure if you can see it. But they were more concerned about access from the middle of town without having to walk all the way around Grove Street. And so they wanted to maintain this access through here from And so they wanted to maintain this access through here from the west side.
I'm sorry, that wasn't clear to me. So the pedestrian utility access is through the entire entirety of the requested vacation area?
Yes, it basically is, but it would be through this corner mostly.
That makes more sense. Thank you. I thought it was only the south part from the drawing. Thank you.
And then is the fire hydrant outside of the vacation?
You can kind of see it on the aerial, right at the corner of the yellow, right here, that little black dot. So it's on the very edge of the Hill Street right-of-way requested for vacation and Grove Street where they meet.
What other questions do we have? Okay, with that, I would like to invite the applicant, Robert Walter, to speak.
Thank you, Rainey. Can you hear me alright?
Yes, we can.
Like we talked about on the phone, you know, I've agreed to to grant an easement to Excel, although I think they already have one since the wire is already there from the pole to my house. And and as far as pedestrian access into the meadow, I definitely will approve access that way. I want to make a note that at the east end of my property, I've made a footpath that it's a slight uphill grade that goes directly into the meadow. And that's how people access the meadow from my, you know, from Grove Street on the east end. It would be actually difficult for anybody to use that from the back of my house, but I'll grant the easement anyway. There's another, another way into the meadow from Hill Street at the top of the meadow. There's a well-worn path up there that goes around the meadow and it can go into the meadow. It goes all the way around to the cemetery. And that's a very real popular dog walking path or just a walking path. There's, you know, tens, you know, up to 50 people a day are using that. But yeah, I anything that they want, I will do. I'm just trying to clean this, all this property up before I leave the world and pass it on to my descendants. With that, you know, I invite any questions that anybody may be concerned about.
Thank you. What questions do we have? Okay, hearing none. I will give the instructions for public comment again. So just a reminder to, if you'd like to provide public comment, there's not currently anyone signed up previously from the homepage, but you can put your name and address in the in the chat window or, you know, press star six to go off mute and let us know that you'd like to speak on this docket. You'll have three minutes and there'll be a buzzer at the end or a charm, a nice charm at the end. And you'll need to direct all questions and comments to the board directly. With that, I'll give you a second to sign up if you'd like to. Okay, seeing and hearing none, I will close public comments and open for discussion among commissioners. I'm happy to start. This is Commissioner Gargano, knowing that Mr. Walters is okay having the pedestrian path and in fact has, you know, thought about it before and had it there. That was the, you know, big sort of concern I had for him. Otherwise, I think it looks good.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Neskey. I agree, it sounds like a good compromise to make sure you still have that utility access and pedestrian access if necessary, but no concerns. Glad to hear there's a good compromise.
Any other comments or emotions?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Libby. One comment and I'll make a motion. I think I'm fine with what's proposed. My preference would be to not have that easement personally, if at all possible, as it appears there's plenty of public access, but I'm happy to go with staff's recommendation on that. It is a burden on the applicant as part of my reason for not wanting to proceed with that, but I'm going to move that we, the planning commission recommended the county commissioner, Board of County Commissioners conditional approval of docket V dash 20 dash zero 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 three, the Walter Vacation, with the three conditions in the staff report.
Commissioner Fitch, I will second the motion.
Okay, I will take a roll call. Sam Fitch.
Yes.
Sam Libby.
Hi.
Melanie Neskey.
Hi.
Mark Bloomfield. Sorry, I didn't quite hear you.
Hi.
Dan Hilton.
Hi.
Ann Goldfarb.
Hi.
And this is Leishen Gargano, aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Alright, I will now open for docket B CCP dash two zero dash zero 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 one, geologic hazard mapping related amendments.
Alright. One moment here. Nope, that's not mine.
It looks like you have to share the whole desktop for it to show up in the recording.
Okay, great. Did that do it?
I'm going to defer to staff.
Chad, this is Rick Hackett, staff. It did show up momentarily. Now it's back.
Okay.
You're not in presentation mode yet. You're still in full PowerPoint mode.
Excellent. That should do it.
There it goes. You're good. Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay. Alright, good afternoon, everyone. This is Chad Indicott, staff planner with community planning and permitting. And for the next item on the agenda, we have docket B CCP dash 20 dash zero 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 one, which entails geologic hazard mapping related amendments to the geology element of the comprehensive plan. And so the agenda for this docket includes simply this staff presentation, any questions for staff from commissioners, followed by public comments, and then again, planning commission discussion, followed lastly by planning commission decision. And for this presentation, I'll be going over the Boulder Comprehensive Plan Amendment Process and Status and where we're at with this draft of the element, an overview of proposed changes, comments received from planning commission and Board of County Commissioners, and then also revisions following the feedback received by planning commission and Board of County Commissioners. And finally, I'll provide staff's recommendation. Alright. So as you can see here on this slide, there are several steps in the process of amending the comprehensive plan. The first step entails staff providing planning commission with a draft work plan and then planning commission will authorize staff to proceed. And then the next step entails planning commission to review the draft element or amendments in a public hearing. And then Board of County Commissioner will reviews any revised drafts or amendments following that hearing and a new public hearing. And then planning commission will review and adopt a final draft in a public hearing, which is what this presentation entails, providing the final draft to planning commission. And followed by that, if approval is received, planning commission will adopt a resolution and amend the comprehensive plan upon certification by the Board of County Commissioners. So I just kind of want to give that overview, let everyone know on the call where we're at with this. And to start us off, I will provide a brief overview of what the changes to the geology element include. Based on geologic hazard constraint mapping developed by county contracted consultants, Caesar Incorporated and Terra Comito GIS Services, Inc., and planning commission feedback during the review of this mapping completed in 2018, staff developed the proposed changes that you see listed here on the slide and the following. The changes include revisions to definitions, a new land use guidelines table and map, which will be used by county development review teams to determine what type of hazard study is needed, if necessary, based on geologic characteristics that are present. And then lastly, there are some policy changes that reflect the new geologic hazard mapping. And here is just another slide of the continuation of the policies that changed. And before diving into the actual changes, I wanted to provide an overview of the feedback received from previous planning commission meeting this last February and the B OCC hearing in March. In the staff packet, you will see the actual redline changes proposed along with the original text. And the upcoming slides include the recent edits that are a little easier to read. And at this time, I'll go over the proposed changes quickly and just those that have been updated since the last two hearings and then answer questions and address these changes in more depth following the presentation. And I can also share my screen to go through the actual draft element changes if that's, makes it easier for folks as well.
Hello, Chad.
Yeah.
My apologies. This is Anna Milner, staff. Just wondering if perhaps you could move the minimize screen from Teams over a bit so that, that's great. Thank you so much. We're just recording this on the video too, so we just wanted to be sure we could see your slide. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Cool. Okay, so on February 19th, staff presented the updated geology element to planning commission and the following recommendations were provided to staff for consideration. First, they wanted to see an expanded definition to the undermined areas definition to include all types of mining, not just coal and undermined areas that are shown on the hazard mapping where hazards have been the most prevalent. And also based on referral comments received from the Colorado Geological Survey, planning commission wanted to see language throughout the updated sections to not limit geologic hazards and constraints to those just shown on the hazards mapping and guidelines table. Because of course, there could be additional hazardous constraints, not always displayed on the landscape scale map that was completed. There was also a recommendation to clarify the studies within the guidelines and table that I will go over here shortly, which were in fact recommendations and not requirements. And lastly, there was a suggestion for publishing individual map layers for public viewing since the composite map is complex and can be hard to determine sometimes what is going on with a particular property. And this is something the staff will continue to look into with the publishing of this element and accompanying mapping to avoid confusion and increase usability by the public. And I know we've received public comment too about educating the public on mapping efforts as well. And this is part of staff's role with this comprehensive plan. So following the planning commission meeting in February, staff made minor revisions to the draft geology element with feedback from the planning commission and the county's consultant and the Colorado Geological Survey. The revisions were presented to the Board of County Commissioners on March 31st and the feedback received from Board of County Commissioners for a piece, planning commission to consider include suggestion to update policy GE 101, really to make the language a little more restrictive to ensure development was not occurring frequently in hazardous areas unless there's an extraordinary circumstance with adequate medication to ensure the safety of the public. There's also a comment to reconsider the inclusion of the fluvial hazards definition that was removed in the last round of edits and I'll go over that soon as well. And the main concern here for both of these comments is for the safety in the public, for safety of the public. And the Board of County Commissioners didn't want to see further development in hazardous areas or including those that may include fluvial hazards and of course, not those that are included in the regulatory floodplain. A little bit of a delay here. One moment. There we go. In this next session, I will review the revisions to the geology element based on the feedback received from planning commission and Board of County Commissioners. The revisions to the definitions, policies and land use guidelines table are relatively minor and I've included all proposed changes to the geology element and have noted on each slide where the revision has occurred since the last two hearings. And for the purposes of this hearing, as I mentioned briefly, I will go through the proposed amendments quickly with a focus solely on the new revisions, since there was any requested changes. Again, the actual redline changes are included in the staff report and the slides are just here for reference. And so, okay, so first we have a few revisions to the definition section. This hasn't changed since planning commission saw this. However, fluvial hazards were brought up during the hearing with Board of County Commissioners, as I mentioned. And the floodplain management team within the county provided useful feedback during the referral phase and suggested removing the fluvial hazards definition from the comprehensive plan, since fluvial hazards are not referenced in the geology element or in the geologic hazard and constraints maps. And additionally, this definition is not in the current geology element. And to address B OCC's comments to suggest leaving in this definition, in many cases, fluvial hazards are located outside of the regulatory floodplains and fluvial hazards are of course important and would ideally be mapped and an accompanying policy will be written into the comprehensive plan eventually in addition to the regulatory floodplain and associated regulations. And this definition in the geologic element, the geology element could be misleading and that's why it was originally proposed to be removed, since it doesn't exist anywhere else within the geology element. However, the Board of County Commissioners comments do address the need for further analysis regarding the fluvial hazards. So that was a long explanation. The other should go a little quicker. The geologic hazard definition was updated to, based on planning commission feedback to expand geologic areas to include, but are not limited to those hazards shown on the geologic hazards and constraints map. And I think that is an important distinction to make. And staff also updated undermined area definition as recommended by planning commission to include any previous mining activity, not just coal mined areas. And the land use guidelines table for geologic hazard constraints developed with Caesar Incorporated was also updated to include feedback from the Colorado Geological Survey. And the purpose of this table is, again, for everyone on the call, is to provide guidance regarding the treatment of each type of geologic hazard or constraint for the purposes of reviewing and improving development on properties with such characteristics. And this is to be, again, provide guidelines for development review staff to use in the assessment process for in the assessment process for for projects. And as you can see on this first slide, the description of this table has been updated to call out the fact that this table is really to be used as starting point and additional hazards and constraints may be present during a site-specific study for a certain project that may be deemed necessary. And those changes are shown in red there. Okay. And so I just wanted to show briefly really minor changes to the land use guidelines table. I will staff included the expanded qualified professional to qualified professional geologists to be consistent with the Colorado professional geologist definition and just provide any clarity here and that may have been missing previously. It's the following slide as well. So the proposed changes to policies since the last two hearings. So the following proposed changes account for language revisions to reflect county characteristics and the updated mapping and the revisions you see in blue reflect the feedback recently received from Board of County Commissioners. Again, to ensure that the county is being proactive about keeping the public safety in mind when looking to review new development in hazardous areas. So I'll read this because it's newer. And so the county may develop programs to mitigate existing development and will only allow development in geologic hazard and constraint areas when a project poses low risks, trails, et cetera, or it is an infrastructure project without viable alternative locations. And in any case, development in a hazard or constraint area will need adequate mitigation by county staff. And the revisions here really reflect the feedback received and also discussions with county staff and how to best address the fact that there are a wide variety of projects that fall under the category of development throughout the county, whether that's public or private. And so ensuring that staff takes a harder look at potential hazards and constraints and may recommend more site-specific study when needed and definitely mitigation if building in hazardous location. And however, there are some projects that do pose low risks, such as trails and open space that may not need as hard of a look. And then also in red, at the bottom of this slide is feedback received from the reflects feedback from the Colorado Geological Survey. Basically again, saying that additional hazard constraints may be identified through site-specific study. And the next page is just a continuation of this policy since it is quite long, especially with recent changes. And just expanding this as well to include the types of studies that are required by a qualified professional and expanding that to include a professional geotechnical engineer with that has geologic conditions as included in the bolted hazards listed below. And this is more relevant with industry standards. Okay. And then lastly, the last change is evaluation of geologic hazard constraints in unincorporated areas. And this again is really just to continually assess geologic characteristics after natural hazards. Since as we all know, there is and what initiated the original mapping efforts for hazard constraints was following the twenty thirteen rain and flood event, which changed a lot of geologic characteristics in the county. So it was important to include this policy and we added, the staff added in red here at the end for feedback to have any additional evaluations reviewed by Colorado Geological Survey or an independent qualified professional geologist. And or an independent qualified geotechnical engineer, just giving the extra level of analysis and review to ensure we're covering everything that's needed. And so lastly, staff request that planning commission approve the proposed amendments to the geology element of the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan and docket B C C P dash twenty dash zero zero one.
Public comments. Can I give a reminder about? If I'm not seeing anybody signed up in advanced for comment on this topic, but if you would like to sign up now, you can put your name and address in the chat. Or if you're on the phone, you can do star six and just go off mute and let us know that you'd like to sign up. You'll get three minutes and there'll be a nice little chime at the end of the three minutes to let you know your time is up. Reminder to direct all of your questions and comments directly to the board. And then if we, you know, have, if there's follow-up on those questions, I can direct them as needed. I'll give you a couple of seconds to sign up. Okay, seeing and hearing none, I will close public comment. And open back up for commissioners to discuss.
This is Commissioner Libby. Overall, yep, super rep with the changes. Everything we kind of talked about last time in terms of quality is the same. So I appreciate that. I think I made the comment last time about the mapping and availability of these layers, which I appreciate you guys are looking into. And the feedback from the staff report, I think specifically for this element, there are so many things that are specific to a property. And how it's impacted that I just want to reiterate that that's really important for public to have access to that information. To know how to apply any of this to their own planning and brainstorming process. They really have to see what it impacts them. And I think last time you guys presented, you showed us some very detailed maps that went into the calculation of the changes to the amount of area covered by this. And whatever we can do to get those out there to the counties and the residents would be great. Otherwise, I'm very supportive of the changes. Thank you for your time.
Other comments or emotion?
This is Commissioner Hilton. I think this looks pretty well refined at this point, so I'm willing to offer a motion if there are no other comments. So I move that planning commission approved the proposed amendments to the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan and adopt docket B C C P dash two zero dash zero 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 one.
Commissioner Bloomfield, I'll second.
I'll take a quick roll call. Ann Goldthur.
Hi.
Dan Hilton.
Hi.
Mark Bloomfield.
Hi.
Melanie Mesky.
Hi.
Sam Libby.
Hi.
Sam Fitch.
Hi.
And Leach Gargano, hi.
Thank you.
All right, onto our final docket of the day, docket B C C P dash two zero dash zero 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 two. Document template convert and related.
Hello. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
And can you see my screen?
Yeah. We can see this. Yeah, there you go.
Perfect. Okay, good afternoon. This is Molly Marcuselli with Community Planning and Permitting. I'm going to be presenting docket B C C P dash twenty dash zero zero two. Conversion and redesign of the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan and Related Content Amendments. So just a quick overview of the agenda I'm going to present and then commissioners can ask me any questions and then public comment, opportunity for me to respond and then discussion among planning commission and then a decision. And just a quick overview of this presentation. I'm just going to go over a quick slide. Chad actually already did a great job doing this, just the comp plan amendment process and status, just to see where we are. Then an overview of the overall proposed changes we've made to the comp plan. And then look into the comments and suggestions that we received from planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners. And then look at summary of staff's proposed solutions to those comments and suggestions and then we'll end with a recommendation. So I won't really get into this. Chad did a great job kind of discussing where we are in the process. We took this to planning commission for comment back in February and then brought the revised draft to Board of County Commissioners in March. And now we are bringing it in front of planning commission as a final draft for adoption. And so this slide I put in here just to kind of refresh what the major amendments to the comprehensive plan were. The rest of this presentation is really going to focus on the comments we received and staff's solutions to those comments. So we did a big kind of redesign of the comprehensive plan in its entirety that included the the layout and the graphics. We added a planning history timeline. We added an open space acquisition chart, which we showed both of those at the previous meetings. And we've also updated the regional context map, which is found in the introduction. We replaced some of the images and maps with higher resolution versions. We made revisions to the executive summary to better frame the document. We reorganized and refined the countywide goals and the element goals. And we also revised the amendment process and history section as well as the information sources page. So these were the main comments that we received from planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners. I'm going to get into these in a little, a little more in the in the following slides, but the main comments were recommending that we rename the subheadings in the countywide goal section. Rethinking the pagination of the document. They also wanted to, wanted staff to incorporate municipal open space into the open space graphic that we had in the open space element. And we also received a comment to think about maybe removing some of the photos in the document, which we will get into. So the first comment, renaming the subheadings in the countywide goal section, just as a quick refresher, in the countywide goal section, there's a subsection called standalone goals and those goals are really supposed to be more high-level goals that don't correspond to any specific element in the comprehensive plan. And then there's another section called goals compiled from countywide elements. And that's really just a summary of all of the goals found in each individual element. And so when we were thinking about renaming those, we came up with two options. And so the first option would be to change the title of standalone goals to countywide goals. And then change goals compiled from countywide elements to element specific goals. And then so this section has end notes too, and they basically just explain what the standalone goals are and what the goals compiled from the countywide elements are. And so we're also proposing to just take out the end notes and move the language to the beginning of each subsection as sort of a mini intro to provide clarification. And then option two, similar to option one, change the name standalone goals to countywide goals. And then actually completely remove the goals compiled from the countywide elements section. And then move the language in the end notes that pertains to the standalone goals to the beginning of that subsection and then remove everything else in the end notes. And so we kind of felt like we could remove the goals compiled from the countywide elements section. Because we didn't really feel that it served a very significant purpose to the overall document. And it would actually end up kind of being a little more work for staff. When we do update elements, we'll have to also update this section. Which isn't a big deal, but again, we just didn't really feel like this this section really served a lot of value for the for the document. And so those are the two options we're proposing. Another note, I'm not sure if anyone's really had time to kind of look at the actual goals themselves. Especially in the standalone goal section, but staff does feel that another update that wasn't really within the scope of this update will be needed in the future to really just kind of reassess the goals in that section and ensure that they accurately reflect the goals and visions of Boulder County. So I just wanted to note that. And then so the second recommendation that we heard from planning mission and B O C C so was pagination. So currently we have it divided into each section. Each section kind of has its own numbering format. And it was recommended that maybe we explore just doing a more consistent numeric kind of one through one hundred type system. And after a lot of discussion, staff has decided to actually keep the numbering format as is for the following reasons. So most navigation is going to be done online. And so we don't really think page numbering is going to affect ease of navigation. Also, when individual elements are updated, it will prevent staff from having to renumber and reprint the entire document. This way, we can just update the table of contents and print out that specific element and replace it. Also, when referencing the document with the public, we typically include direct links to either the page or the section. So I don't think in any case, the members of the public are really going to be scanning the document, having trouble trying to find a specific page number or section. Staff can also change how page numbers are displayed in PDF in PDF form. So if we wanted to reference a specific number, we could reference it as page fifty rather than like A G five. This is also the format that the comprehensive plan has currently as well as the land use code. So it would be consistent with a relevant document. This is a very simple fix too. So if we do find that this numbering system creates issues, we can easily change that. And lastly, the printed versions will have tabs to make navigation easier when you're actually using the hard copy. And so those are the reasons we've decided to keep numbering format as is. And then so we did receive a couple suggestions to incorporate municipal open space into our open space graphics. So again, just as a quick refresher, at the last meeting, we have presented a graphic we worked with open parks and open space to make. And it reflected open space acquisition in Boulder County by decade. But it didn't include municipal open space. And so we worked with open space again to actually just create a separate graphic. And we really just wanted this graphic to be really simple, just kind of at a glance, what is the breakdown of protected lands in Boulder County? And we were able to break it down into five categories. We have county, municipal, state, federal and other public lands. And so this right here is not the final form. We will still have to put it in the document and it will be more consistent with the the color scheme and the overall theme of the comprehensive plan. But this is definitely the the idea that we had and will most likely probably add percentages in there as well. And then we wanted to add a little blurb that says approximately sixty eight percent of Boulder County is protected as open space. And then the notes section that'll accompany the the graphic as well. So when we were working with open space, we quickly learned that trying to make a very simple simplified graphic with really complicated data is not easy. And there's kind of a lot of nuances. And so we wanted to be as transparent as possible with with all of the data. So we don't have to go into the detail of those notes. We can go back to it if you want, but that's just what we're going to include with the graphic. And then one of the Board of County Commissioners did recommend maybe thinking about removing some of the photos in the comprehensive plan. They felt that the document was just a little photo heavy. And so we had some discussions about that and we have decided to just keep the current number of photos throughout the plan as is. For the following reasons. So we did work with InReach, which was the graphic design firm. We've worked with them already to remove several photos to try and balance the ratio of photos to text already. And so the plan in its current form already reflects those efforts. And we felt that removing more photos would create some issues with overall formatting of the document as well. And so those are why we're gonna, we're not going to remove any more photos from the document. And that leads us to our recommendations. So staff requests that the planning commission provide direction to staff for improving the countywide goal section and approve the proposed amendments to the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan and adopt docket. and approve the proposed amendments to the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan and adopt docket BCCP dash twenty dash zero 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 two. Thanks.
Okay, hearing that, I will give the quick rundown of how to participate if you're from the public and want to speak. Just a reminder that I don't see anybody that signed up ahead of time. But if you'd like to sign up now, you can enter your name and address in the chat. Or you can, if you're on the phone, go off mute with a star six and do it verbally. And we will get you three minutes on the clock. And there'll be a nice little charm at the end of that three minutes when you're done. Just a reminder not to submit any comments or questions into the chat and to make sure you direct all questions and comments to the board. All three of the full seconds and let you all sign up if you want. Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close public comments. And open it up for commissioner discussion.
Commissioner Bloomfield. I'll say that seems like, you know, the direction that staff moved in is a good one. They seems like they held their ground on some things with some good reasoning. And I definitely think that the update overall is welcome. Make the make the comp plan much more accessible.
So this is Commissioner Fitch. I agree with Mark that the overall direction is quite good. I don't have any quarrel with any of the particular changes in this last round. I did have time to go back and scan through most of the draft document, and I think it's a real improvement over what we've had in the past. There's more integration among the elements. My one complaint, but I wouldn't want to put it in this round of revision. It's way too long. It's 159 pages to describe the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan. And I know as an academic, writing shorter is writing is harder than writing longer. But I do think that's a sort of longer term goal that staff ought to look at is how we could how we take the elements that we have and condense them to be more succinct so that somebody who really did want to sit down and read the whole thing could do so without taking a day or two of their time.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Gargano. I think that ties into the other Sam's comment, you know, just that long term goal of accessibility rate, people being able to see how it applies to them and what that means to them in a in a quick way, which I know is very difficult.
This is Commissioner Libby. I think in the interest of the first question being asked here around the direction on those two options, which I think is on page three of the staff report. I think my preference is is option one, which I think is simpler and clarifies the naming. It's somewhat hard for me to tell the difference between both of them in a lot of detail. And that we haven't seen how it would look to have option two implemented, but I'm happy to go forward with option one as our recommendation. It's shorter and more straightforward, knowing that they're going to also revisit those in the future planning effort.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Libby. Again, I'm happy to make a motion. If nobody else has any comments on these options or anything else. Okay, I move that the planning commission approved the proposed amendments to the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan and adopt docket number BCCP dash twenty dash zero 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 two.
Do we have to provide? Should we provide information in the motion about option one versus option two?
That's a good question. Was it just that we should suggest it or should it be part of the motion?
I feel like it's we provided direction on that, which was requested. If nobody has any other comments or. I'll second the motion.
Hi.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Anne Goldfarb, hi.
Hi.
I think you said me.
I lost my sheet, so I'm going by memory and I.
Oh.
Sorry.
My audio is a little sketchy.
Okay.
I think you muted yourself.
Melanie Mesky. Hi. Did I? Sorry, did I get everyone? Or did I do Anne Goldfarb?
Hi.
And then Leishan Gargano, hi.
Leishan, this is Richard Hackett staff. Can you just just to make it clear because he did cut out, can you just clarify what the result of the roll call vote was?
Oh, it was unanimous yes.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we can conclude this meeting of the. Any questions?
Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks.